Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Next is our approval of the minutes from our October 2nd meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October 2nd, 2018 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
One abstention.
The motion carries with one abstention, Councilmember Kreskowiak. We have one, two, three, four, five, six items on our consent agenda this evening. The first is to approve a therapeutic massage enterprise license for Sapphire Massage LLC, 12685 Riverdale Boulevard, Suite 17. Jennifer Lynn Cook of Sapphire Massage LLC has submitted an application for a therapeutic massage enterprise license. She's leased space in the building of salons by J.C. at Riverdale Village and paid the background investigation and license fee for a therapeutic massage enterprise license. She's also provided proof of the required liability insurance, and approval is contingent upon the police department's background investigation findings. So we're looking to approve the issuance of a therapeutic massage enterprise license to Ms. Cook for Sapphire Massage LLC located at 12685 Riverdale Boulevard, Suite 17, pending a successful background investigation. Next item on our consent agenda, which is actually item three on this evening's agenda, is to approve the final payment to Park Construction for Project 17-1 Street Construction. And this is the Dogwood University north of 101st Avenue. There was an addition of $4,344.96, and the total due is $24,667, which is actually $26,000 under the final contract. The change order where the addition was in there was for cleanup, ramping, driveways, catch basins, et cetera, after the major hailstorm on June 11th, 2017, and the actual project costs were less than the final contract amount due to quantity adjustments from the original bid. All of the above dates and amounts are reasonable and accurate according to the project file, and with this, we will be making the final payment to Park Construction Company in the amount of $24,667 for Project 17-1 Street Reconstruction. Next item on our consent agenda is item four on this evening's agenda, and we are looking at a resolution to set a public hearing for a water main vacation, vacation or vacation? One sounds better than the other. For Chrysler, Coon Rapids Chrysler located at 10541 Woodcrest Drive Northwest. The vacation is being considered as part of Chrysler constructing a new building and with the intent to remove the existing building. The parking lot, water main pipes, and easements have to be reconfigured to accommodate the new building, and that new building is huge. Wow, that's impressive. The new easements will be brought to the city council for acceptance at a future date, and the staff requests that the council adopt a resolution to begin the process of vacating the water main easement, and a vacation petition may be initiated by the city council upon adoption of a resolution by a four-fifths majority. Resolution 18-99 calls for a public hearing on November 20th, 2018, for the council to consider the vacation, so we'll be looking to adopt Resolution 18-99, which calls for a public hearing on November 20th, 2018, for a vacation of a water main easement. Next item on our agenda... For some reason, it looks like I'm skipping one. Item, let me go ahead. Item five is to consider approving a recycling center staffing agreement with Atlas Staffing, Incorporated. We're looking to approve a contract with Atlas Staffing, Incorporated, to provide contracted staffing at the recycling center. Atlas has proven to be a great fit for the recycling center, and staff would like to renew the annual contract from November 1st, 2018 through November 1st, 2019. So with this, we'll be approving the contract with Atlas Staffing, Inc., for contracted staffing at the recycling center. Next item on the consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 18-100, accepting donations to the Coon Rapids Love My Pet Fair. The Coon Rapids Love My Pet Fair held its fourth annual event on September 22nd, 2018, and its goal is to promote responsible pet ownership by hosting a variety of pet services, products, and education from vendors and businesses supporting the pet industry. Approximately 600 people came with their pets to enjoy a variety of activities and education in support of pet ownership. A total of 33 vendors, educators, and organizations participated in the event. More than 40 staff members from various departments, good neighbors from the senior center, and community volunteers donated their time to put this event together. So we're looking to acknowledge the support given to the Coon Rapids Love My Pet Fair, and that included 16 sponsors and four partners for the 2018 Coon Rapids Love My Pet Fair. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 17-107, accepting the contributions and donations made to the 2018 Coon Rapids Love My Pet Fair. And I think I'll just go through and recognize them. We've got Kathy Angle, or Angel, Chanicle Pizza, Chuck and Don's, Cubs Northdale, Cub Northdale, Cub Riverdale, Dar Addison, Dunn Brothers, Home Furniture, Home Depot, Nationwide Insurance, Nothing But Bunt Cakes, Nutrisource Pet Foods, Devani's, Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers, S.R. Harris, and other various participating vendors, and then the four partners in this for the Animal Humane Society, the Coon Creek Watershed District, Barbara Gislyson, and V Touch, and I probably didn't get those last two right, but, all right. And then the last item on our consent... Thank you to all of the sponsors and the partners, and thank you to everybody that participated, and especially everybody that came to the event. It was a great, very nice event. Last item on our consent agenda, authorize application for Inoka County Business and School Recycling Grant. Inoka County is offering a non-residential grant to improve waste management programs. Bunker Hills received a $10,000 grant from Inoka County in 2015 to purchase recycling, organics, and waste containers and a baler. The containers have since worn out due to the absence of dolly systems for transport. This current grant would replace the worn-out containers, increase the number of containers due to growth at the facility, and add dollies to each cart. So with this, we'll be authorizing submission of a grant application to the Inoka County Business and School Recycling Program for Bunker Hills Golf Course. And that should be our full consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer to move the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Next on the agenda is item eight. Consider an introduction of ordinances revising the fees for 2019. And we're being asked to consider the introduction of ordinances, and this is just an introduction, to adjust certain fees for 2019. Fees set by resolution will be presented when the ordinances are considered for adoption at the November 7th, 2018 city council meeting. Mr. Demmer, anything you want, any highlights you want to hit on this before we kind of talk about it?
Sure. Mayor, council, I think it's important to note that the finance department did conduct a fee study this year. What essentially that entailed was comparing our fees to other municipalities as best we can. It's not always an apples-to-apples comparison. There are still a few of those things that we are rounding out for the next meeting, and so some more information that will come there. For the most part, those fees were at or around the average. There are a few that we did bring down because either A, they weren't, they might have been slightly above average, or B, as we looked at the staff time that was put into them, we thought we could bring that down somewhat. So there will be, as I mentioned, some more information coming forward to you on that as we look toward the next meeting, but I think for the most part, as we saw that our fees were in that average ballpark as we looked at six or seven cities across the metro.
It seems like we went for consistency in a lot of these things.
Correct.
Like tavern license, including public dancing, is now the same price as a bottle club, including public dancing. It's probably similar background checks and whatever.
Yep. Mayor, council, I think that's fair, as there were a couple cities who really had some consistent fees across the board for a lot of things, and you can tell that they probably review it every so many years and rather than raise it, you know, 2.75 percent, they might raise it $25 every so often. As we thought about, I think that model made some sense just from a consistency standpoint, not that we can go all the way there at once. Our 2019 budget in terms of the revenues for fees was kind of predicated on our existing fee structure, so there's, but there's something we can look at there over time as to how to start to match those up. Interestingly enough, it did also generate a lot of conversations about fees for things that maybe made sense 20 years ago or still in ordinance as requiring a fee that either haven't occurred in the last, you know, 10, 15 years, we can look at removing, or there are some philosophical questions about fees that maybe a fee is high for a particular reason as a way to avoid a, you know...
Disincentivize something?
Disincentivize something that, I guess there's some questions there that we'll be bringing forward to council in the future about, you know, is that philosophy still the same, things like that.
It looked like you get down to the plan reviews and everything to do with planning. All of those changed. Almost all of them went up, with the exception of the site plan review residential came down 165 to match the site plan review commercial, which came up 260, so they both beat $750. Again, just lining them up.
Yep, Mayor, council, and that's a good one where we looked more closely at, you know, what's the actual cost to produce that fee? There's a lot of staff time that goes into those. As we looked at the commercial versus residential, there's a similar amount of work that would be needed for the most, unless it's a really large commercial project, and so we thought it'd make sense to line those up.
Council, any questions on this, other questions before we consider introduced?
All right, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer, what?
Move to...
Oh, we're just introducing this.
No, this is just... Sorry.
I think, are we?
Just trying to find the right line, and it says no introduce, like darn it.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have to move to introduce?
No, we got rid of that. That was annoying.
I think it predated you.
Oh, no, no. I was here for a few moments.
Really? So, all right, so if there's no other objection or no other questions, we will consider introduced an ordinance to revise certain license fees, service fees, and related charges effective January 1st, 2019, and we will consider introduced an ordinance establishing permit and inspection fees for the Building Inspections Division effective January 1st, 2019. And we'll be looking at that for adoption at the November 7th, 2018 meeting, so if you have any concerns about that, reach out to staff or council and let us know. Item nine, consider a memorandum of understanding for Inoka County Economic Develop Initiative. And I think that I should just let Matt Brown or Grant or somebody talk about this, because we're spending big money here.
Yeah, I can provide a resumption, and obviously, we talked about this a little bit in the work session tonight, but the council's asked to approve an MOU with Inoka County and the other cities and one township in Inoka County for a regional economic development initiative. The period of the MOU is for five years, and this had really been a project that was initiated a year or two ago by a combination of cities along with Conexus Energy and the Metro North Chamber of Commerce to do more at the regional level when it comes to business recruitment, business retention. So one of the main projects that has gone on over the last year or so is development of a regional economic development website for Inoka County along with a sites and buildings database. We recommend approval of the MOU overall. It will really give us an opportunity to do more in the way of economic development marketing, just because we'll, at the city level, be able to work with our neighbors, work with Inoka County and the chamber group on those efforts. So I can answer any questions. Jakel Hyder from Inoka County is also here to answer any questions.
Excellent. Council?
Your Honor?
Yes. Councilmember Demmer?
Make a motion this time, right?
Yeah.
All right. Move to approve the memorandum of understanding and voluntary cost-sharing agreement with Inoka County for the Regional Economic Development Initiative.
Sir? Motion by Demmer, second by Wells, and then just to clarify, we're looking at a contribution in 2018 of $3,418, and in 2019, $3,598, and those sufficient funds exist in the HRA marketing budget for this expenditure, and that's based on population, our shares. Councilmember Demmer?
So here's an annoying technical question. Can we spend 2019 money right now in this, or do we have to reauthorize that in 2019, or just have it be part of the budget?
This, the funding levels are really more for informational purposes. That voluntary cost-sharing agreement, as you pointed out during the work session, is voluntary. We do have a marketing budget as part of the HRA fund that was established for 2018 and also is in the budget for 2019, so assuming that doesn't change, we'll look at those funds.
So this is more of a guidance that we think that's a good thing to spend the money on than actually a resolution to spend the money?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion in a second, correct? All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, Councilmember Johnson?
Sorry to interrupt, but we had a workshop on this before our meeting here today, and I think I got answers to most of my questions. I'm largely in support of the concept. I think the investment that the city is making is a good investment. It's a, and it's a nice thing to see the county and Conexus and the chamber and some of the cities getting together to talk about economic development. The memorandum of understanding, though, is a little unclear when you attach it and look at Exhibit B to the memorandum of understanding. And so when we had our workshop, we were just trying to get some clarification on this, and we had a conversation about how there would be possibly seven voting members. So just so that the public understands this, in our workshop, we were talking about how there would be a voting member from the county, and there would be a voting member from Conexus Energy, which they funded most of the study to create this, so that seems to make eminent sense. There'd be a voting member from the chamber, that is understandable because of the business interests that they represent. And then there'd be voting members from four cities, and they would then rotate periodically. And so you had what I thought was going to be a seven-member kind of voting block, which is a nice odd number, then with four votes on anything or more, you carry a vote. What is unclear to me, though, when I read that with the memorandum of understanding, it says that there can be up to two voting members for the county. So a county vote is kind of double-weighted. And does that then mean that there is actually an eight-member voting block, which leaves us with this weird dynamic where we have an even-numbered board, voting board, and it would then require a five-member majority to carry a vote? And I don't know if there's any clarification for that, but I think that that's a difficult dynamic that exists. Frankly, I like the concept of a seven-member board, because then a four-vote majority can carry it, and you don't run into the possibility, now, understand, I think largely most of the representatives are going to agree, but you never know what's coming before this group. So there's a little bit of an odd dynamic, and I wanted to make sure that everybody kind of understood that before we voted on it. I intend to kind of vote in favor for this, because I think it's good in principle, but I think any amendment to this dynamic would then have to be approved by the vote of the whole group if they found it unwieldy or whatever, and understand that in that dynamic, the county has two votes, each city only has one, just so that people understand that.
Councilmember Johnson, the bullet point that you're talking about seems to be opposite of how it was described or different than how it was described.
A little different than how it was described, and I don't think there was any intent to mischaracterize it. I mean, it's a bit of a, you know, when you look at Exhibit B, you have one, two, three, four, five members of the county that are on the board, and, you know, they're all members that make sense to me when I look at that as to why they'd be there. But then, in the memorandum of understanding, it says that they can have up to two votes. And then when you add that to the other voting members, you end up with an eight-member voting block, which then requires five members to carry a majority, as opposed to a seven-member voting block, which would require four members to carry a majority. It's a little into the weeds, but I wanted everybody to understand that, because what that means, just so that everybody on the council and everybody in Coon Rapids understands, is that the county has a two-member vote, so the county has a double vote over each of the city members and the, if you will, industry members that are on the board. It is also the county that's leading this initiative, so I put that before I begin as well.
Thank you. Seems like a clarification and not a game changer, so...
Not a game changer for me, I'm still going to vote in favor of it. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that dynamic so that there weren't any kind of questions or surprises down there.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
For me, I... It's a county initiative, there's five people sitting at the table for the county, even though they get the two votes, I'd love to be able to see, you know, them to potentially look at other cities sitting at the table as well, even though there may only be four voting members for the city, so you have additional voices at the table, if that's what we're looking at, and why we would need more people. And it's a five-year, this is what we get for five years, and, but at the same point in time, we can vote every year, and if we're going to put any money to it, you know, so if it's not working, we just say, no, we don't want the budget to be spent on it, and it's not a huge dollar amount. I would have rather have seen it and had more input into what this was going to be versus a half an hour ago, to have our first conversation about it, and expect us to vote on this, you know, granted, we read it a couple of days ago, but there was no chance for any sort of feedback or interaction with staff or the county. So I guess I'm a little disappointed in that. I will support it, but look to make sure that it's actually doing what we want it to do, to see if we're actually going to fund it.
Well, I think also at the workshop, it was mentioned that this is a really large thing, that it's all starting at once, and if we need to make adjustments as we go, you know, if things aren't working, or if we think that there's a, you know, misappropriation of power, that's the wrong word, but if something isn't working right...
Imbalance.
An imbalance.
Yeah, imbalance of power, that we can, I would think, encourage some changes or changes.
You'll just require at least five members to vote on it.
So that is actually my question, is how do changes happen? Is it the board that makes their own changes, or is it the members of the memorandum of understanding that would make the changes? Does it have to go back to the 21 cities and townships, or does it...
I believe, according to the memorandum of understanding, and I defer to council on this if he has any different understanding, but a vote of the membership of the executive committee can change the bylaws or memorandum of understanding.
That sounds much less clunky than all 21 have to sign off again.
If you look at item G, though, it says it's material alterations, which I would think would be a change, and would be that, is the amendment and signed by the parties, and when you look at the parties, it's every city that's part of it, so it's all 21.
So in that case, it's not likely to change a lot.
All right, let me see for a second.
Paragraph.
Not a big...
We don't know that.
Paragraph change.
No, we don't know that.
But if something proves unwieldy, I would think that it would be reasonable to go out and have a...
I think that's the other thing, is while it's less likely that we're going to make any changes, the cities ultimately do hold the power, because they're the ones who can change it. So regardless of the makeup of the board, things have to get approved by the members, so I think that's a reasonable balance.
I think this is a good time to call a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. All right. Curious with a little asterisk, or?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Pray for success.
Go team.
Go team, well, that's what it is, it's a whole team effort, so. All right, well, thank you very much. Item number 10 is to consider Resolution 18-102, providing for the sale of $11,275,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2018A. Ms. Legg, you want to talk about these at all?
Mayor and council, what we're asking you to do tonight is just to adopt the resolution providing for the sale. The sale would take place on November 20th. The resolution has the right date, it's November 20th, my memo's got the 7th, so that was a typo. But we're basically funding projects that we've already been working on, and some of the park improvement that's going to be upcoming in 2019. So we've got the projects that we did in 2018, Project 18-1 Street Reconstruction, and 18-2 Street Reconstruction, which also included some water main reconstruction. So there's two different kinds of bonds included for those two projects, and then we've got the referendum that was passed in 2013. We've pieced this up maybe a little bit more than originally was intended, but you don't want to issue bonds too soon, because then you have to pay arbitrage if you're not spending them. So we've had a number of issues, but after this bond issue, we'll only have one more of about a million and a half left of that referendum. So, and we have been, just so you know, we have been levying the amount that we told the voters back in 2013. So we're levying the same amount that we said we were going to, it's just that in some cases, we use the cash, or we use the debt to pay it, just so people are paying what they were told, so.
Councilmember Demmer?
I have two questions, one I always try to ask whenever there's bonds, so if you want to just put it in the thing that I don't have to ask, but...
Oh, gosh.
Any effect to our credit rating anticipated?
Well, no, we have not gone through the Moody's rating yet, but I anticipate that it's going to be the same rating. Again, I don't, we've never been cited for having any kind of higher debt ratios. We've been issuing debt, every year we've been doing that, we've been pretty aggressive on these street projects and on park improvement, too, but, no, we're still well within limits as far as I know yet. But Moody's will look at all this again, and that'll happen in the next couple of weeks, and I'm anticipating that a rating will stay the same.
And then the second one is, I know that sometimes we get into situations where we want to call bonds, and so when I see three things put together, then the question is, why do we put all, you know, there's three things, right? There's the...
There's three different kinds.
Street reconstruction, the water bond, and the trail. So is there a reason why we put it together as one big one versus doing three separate ones? Does it affect our ability to call them later if we want to? I was just curious about the logic of one big issue instead of three small.
One big issue saves issuance costs, because we're saving rating fees, we're saving fees from Lers, we're saving attorney fees, so it's less expensive...
Right.
...to do the three kinds of issues in there, but we could call them individually, so...
So there's no real consequence, you just save the issuing, and you could do a partial call later?
Right, they're essentially three different kinds of bond issues. They're three issues on their own, it's just rolled into this one package.
Thank you.
Your Honor? Councilmember Johnson?
Just a couple of due diligence questions for me, I'm assuming that bond counsel, and this is, um, Kennedy and Graven?
Correct.
Okay, and Barnes and Thornburg is not involved? Thank you. So I can vote on this one?
Uh-huh.
All right. All right, any other questions? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I will make a motion to authorize Resolution eighteen dash one oh two, providing the sale of eleven million, two hundred seventy-five thousand general obligation bonds, series two eighteen A.
Sir.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. And we are at the open-mic portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to address counsel for open mic? All right, sir, if you would please address the, uh... Up to the microphone there. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate, please approach the podium, you've done all that, and state your name and address before addressing the council, and then, uh, if necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forwarded to the speaker, so you have three minutes here.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Joby Smith, I'm a resident city, uh, citizen of the city that lives in Ward Five. My address is ten seventy-one Woody Lane, northwa- northwest. I testify that the artificial addition of fluoride to the public water supply of the city of Coon Rapids be ended immediately for the following ethical and scientific reasons. Fluoride kills enzymes and bacteria, that kills bacteria which produce acid, which degrades teeth when fluoride is applied to teeth only, but swallowing fluoride to circulate throughout the body by exposing fluoride to the rest of the body is exposing fluoride's toxicity to the rest of the human body, which is harmful, risky, and dangerous. Fluoride is the only chemical added to the water supply that does not relate to the treatment of the water itself, and is a toxic chemical, which is found evident in its application in rat poisons, insecticides, and in fluoridated toothpaste poison warnings against swallowing the toothpaste. It is therefore inhumane to add fluoride to the drinking water and public water supply. Only a fraction of the fluoride added to the public water supply reaches the target of intended treatment, teeth, while the rest goes to washing dishes, flushing toilets, or to water lawns and gardens, thus contributing to pollution. Fluorine has a protecting action against cavities, but this is a local effect to teeth. If you drink it, you run the risk of all kinds of toxic actions. A more rational way to use fluoride in treating teeth is to voluntarily use fluoridated toothpaste, which can be applied to teeth only in appropriate and suitable amounts for the individual, for the toothpaste to be spat out, to minimize any exposure to the rest of the human body to fluoride's toxicity, and to avoid having anyone. That should not be exposed to fluoride, be exposed to fluoride, such as infants and young toddler children. Fluoride is a neurotoxin which damages neuron cells and harms the human body. Fluoride is the only chemical that is artificially added to the public water supply for a medical claim of treating teeth, but adding fluoride to the public drinking water is involuntarily forcing all consumers of the public water supply to ingest fluoride throughout their whole body, and to be quote-unquote "medicated" without regard for the consent of consumers of the public water supply. With persons having fluoride put into them in their drinking water without their voluntary and informed consent, makes artificial water fluoridation unethical for forced medication and forced human experimentation, with no regard for the voluntary consent of patients/subjects to the experimentation and/or medic- medication, which violates the International Nuremberg Code of Medical and Experimental Ethics on multiple points, and violates the individual right to voluntary consent and withdrawal from medication or experimentation upon individual will.
Are you close to the end there, Joe, I'm sorry?
Uh, for further, for further information upon this, I have written a formal letter, uh, to, uh, the city council, which I will offer to give, uh, to anyone who is willing to read it, uh, on it, for, uh, the judgment and, uh, view of the city council.
Thank you, thank you, and I'll, I'll look forward to a response from our utility department, 'cause it's always been an interesting thing to wonder about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else to address city council for open mic? Hearing none, and again, thank you very much, it took a lot of courage, thank you. Um, we have one report for previous open mics. This was from Kristen Jadnek, one one zero eight five Robinson Drive. Uh, she appeared before council to express concerns regarding street lighting along Robinson Drive near Oak Grove Apartments. The staff met with Kristen following the meeting to get specific information on the lighting concerns. A majority of the concerns were related to private ownership within apartment and town home properties. Staff provided information and options for approaching the property manager to seek assistance on the matter. Further, staff is investigating the request for the installation of a streetlight along Robinson Drive. This investigation will be conducted as part of the next traffic review committee, and the resident will be notified of the outcome. Uh, no further out, action is recommended at this time, and we are at other business.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I think the, the one big thing that we should have on calendars is next week, Wednesday, October twenty-fourth, there's an open house for anybody who wants to learn about Port River Walk, that's the old, um, way-old city hall site, that's Coon Rapids Boulevard, Abusit, um, and that's at the Civic Center here, from five to seven P.M., and you can learn all about that development, what's happening there, what the different home plans are, and...
The pedestrian bridge.
Pedestrian bridge, did I miss anything that we're gonna cover? Okay, so that was the, the one big thing that is coming up on the calendar.
All right. Any other business, counsel? Mr. Stell, do you have your hand up?
Mayor, council, uh, we should probably mention that, starting tomorrow through Sunday, Hanson Boulevard will be closed, uh, certain construction activity will occur out there, and will be a little test for next summer when it'll be enclosed for the majority of the construction season.
So it's, not tomorrow, right? Wednesday the seventeenth?
Seventeenth through Sunday the twenty-first, I don't know, Tim, if you've got any more specifics on the, uh, closure itself?
Primarily, it's Thursday, Friday, there'll be, starting to move things into place, tomorrow, Wednesday. So there may be kind of a midday, um, idea, we'd like to keep it open all through, um, the peak hours, but, um, it's a lot to get done, and so they're, they're already anxious, they've been working out there the last few days, trying to get those water main connections done, so we can get it open for the winter.
And they gotta pave it.
Portions are already done.
Yep. Yeah, that was, the next day after we had the meeting where he said it'll be paved, I drove by and it was all tore up, and I was like, oh, are you sure? But it's all been, uh, done and repaved, so...
Wonderful.
And the, um, last Friday on the community update, Commissioner Schulte said, the plan is for next week, it will be open two lanes north and two lanes south, um, and paved, so, hopefully that, hopefully that rings true.
Just get his fingers crossed.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I have one other, um, item, and I think Ms. Lynn's mayor can help me out with it as well, so, early voting has started, so if you could come to city hall and get either an absentee, or you could actually just vote at city hall, correct?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Geisler, right now, we're in the absentee balloting phase, so you still have to do the absentee, which involves envelopes, starting on Tuesday, October thirtieth, you can place your ballot directly in the machine, and that'll go for a week.
Okay.
So, so right before Halloween?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so I just, 'cause we have all of the vote things out here, and wanna make sure that if you aren't gonna be around...
We've been busy, we voted nearly six hundred people so far.
Fabulous.
Oh, nice, nice.
What are the times, starting Tuesday, October thirtieth?
Eight to four thirty, Monday through Friday, and then we'll be open on Saturday, November third, from ten to three.
Oh, wow, okay, good.
There was a pretty good line here in two thousand sixteen on that Saturday, and so...
Yes, there was. We believe we'll have that again.
So it might really sound convenient, but, you know, you might wanna bring a lunch or something.
For me, too.
All right, um, I wish we had a really tough question for the, you know, for the acting chief tonight, since we have Erin here representing the fire department, you know, thanks for being here.
Thanks, Mayor, appreciate it.
Open houses, you just had the, uh, fire, fire, um, open houses for the fire stations.
Yep, last Saturday, we had our open house, uh, all three stations were open from ten till noon, I think we had a great turnout, all three, the weather was a little, little shaky, as many of you are aware, it was a little chilly out there, so, uh, we appreciate everyone coming out of the community and, uh, everyone's attendance, so...
It was, it was really well attended, it was really well done, I would make a recommendation, because of the cold wind that day, that the, the hose spring at, at station one was upwind, that wasn't the good place for that, it was kind of wafting back over. Two and three, downwind, didn't get, didn't get wet.
Duly noted.
All right, anything else? Mr. Anderson, what's going on out at the golf course?
Mayor, council, we're, uh, anticipating fall at some point, it seems to have been skipped somewhere in the schedule, but we're looking forward to some warm weather, and, and hopefully we get four to six weeks more of fall, more outdoor golf season, there's no predictor in the fall, no Punxsutawney Phil of the fall, so we'll just have to pay attention to the forecasts, and we've got some beautiful weather coming up, and I believe the kids are out of school, so we'll look forward to having a big crowd Thursday, Friday, and beyond.
God bless you, Tim, that was really encouraging.
Let's hope.
Mr. Hammer, did you have your hand up there?
One item, Mr. Mayor, council, a spooky skate at the Coon Rapids Ice Center is Sunday the twenty-eighth, so there's haunted hallway, costume contests, skating, uh, different activities and events for people, five thirty to seven thirty, Sunday the twenty-eighth.
Okay, excellent. All right, any other business to come before council?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.